All right. Good evening, everyone. I will call this work session of the Tegar Twelton School Board to order at 4:36 PM. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. And the topic of the work session today is revisiting the EISH, also known as the Bias Incidents and Hate Speech Response Committee, as it relates to the ODE Equity Advisory Committee requirement. Dr. Ricky Smith, Blue Gear, our presenter.
Thank you, Chair. This evening, I would also invite Director Un to the center, as well as Director Tracy Rose, to be part of our work here this evening. You should have copies that were sent to you of the Senate Bill 732, from which the OAR originated, which provides the nuts and bolts methodology for which we are responsible as a district of 10,000 or greater to stand up and an equity advisory committee. You should also have a copy of our board policy, Bias Incidents and Hate Speech Oversight Committee ACV AR2. And I'm going to make sure everyone has copies at the ready for that. And Director Lynn, are those available to you as well, sir?
I'm checking.
Those will be the documents we'll be working from, primarily the OAR and ACV AR2.
Okay.
Those are the two documents that are linked.
Yeah, they were.
Session.
Yeah, they were attached. All right. With that, I'm going to, since Director Un has been intimately involved with this process at the state level as part of an expanded DEI director's unit across the state, I'll let her say a few, offer a few comments relative to the process and where we are today. And then I will offer the board several options as to how we can proceed, given the timeline. So Director Un.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. So I think from the experience that I've had on our end with other equity directors, we have highlighted, we appreciate the intentions of the bill and also the timeline is very rigorous. And when the feedback that we've gotten so far from other community directors, equity directors, have been, you know, to really do this work with intentionality and focus, there does need to be some time to connect and engage with families and communities in a way that feels authentic and honors the intentions of the bill. That being said, you know, we have had some work in, you know, all the different committees that we have engaged in and how many of those community members have been a part of the work, our equity work, and being able to also inform them and reach out to our students, staff, and families who also might be interested in this work as well. So I think that relates to our topic today. And, you know, we started off with sharing some of that information with our building equity coordinators and our equity leadership team at our beginning of the year time together. And I know that they've been reaching out to families and students as well. We're waiting on our high school teams to reach out to some of our affinity alliance groups. But that is part of our work thus far. And some feedback from our other colleagues around the state.
And Director Rose, is there anything you'd like to add to that relative to the recruitment of individuals? Because I know that there was a link that was sent out in last week's newsletter.
Yes, in working with Director Un, we included it in both staff and the community newsletter. It's gone out two weeks in a row to the staff.
Thank you. So I would direct your attention primarily to the OAR as that gives us the direction. And one of the reasons that we've entitled this also an EISH review is that as you take a look at what the work that we did prior to Senate Bill 732, not even knowing that that was on the radar. And I would love to say that it appears to be repressant and once again set the tone for work in the district. But I've also learned to live humbly. And so I'll leave it at that. However, when you take a look at the work and the wording, particularly from Chair Bowman's and our alumnus, Abdi Mohadin's work, that there's some great connections and overlap or re-echoing of those same themes in Senate Bill 732 and certainly the OAR 5820222307. And so for that, it calls out within that OAR that we are primarily focused to the underrepresented and underserved populations, which is consistent with our practices, that it is meant to be an advisory committee to the board. The hallmarks of this committee is that while of the board, they are not to be, there are to be no board representatives nor superintendent sitting on that committee. And so this is a difference and a departure from what we have for ACV. The second piece with that is the fact that we are, however, to rely supports to the committee. So in terms of print and access to email, as well as translation, so that there is the opportunity for full participation. In addition, we are to hold at least one seat, if not more, on the budget committee, which Director Moore has already planned for in the event that we have a resignation or retirement from that committee so that a representative from the EAC could, EEAC could roll up onto the budget committee. So in looking at the charge, which is to basically provide input, much like what we see in the EISH, about what is going well, what is not going well, including an up to potentially an evaluation and equity audit, which we also do, and looking at our policy ACC, which already commands an equity audit, and looking at policy ACV, the whole alphabet today, relative to hate speech and bias acts. What I am proposing to this board for your discussion and consideration this evening is a thought of rolling up the EISH committee function into the Educational Equity Advisory Committee to the board and initially populating some of those seats with members of the current EISH committee, except for our two board members and myself. And then continuing to recruit and have a slate for your consideration. Our goal is to try to get it done by the September 26th board meeting. We had in statute, OAR, it states that we were to have this committee have its first meeting on September 15th. We will clearly miss that date. And we are not alone in districts our size as guidance from ODE came late in the summer. And so we are all working with due diligence to get the committee itself identified. And our goal would be to have its first meeting sometime in October. My reason for suggesting this is twofold. One, there appears to be overlap of expectations and work. Two, I want to ensure that we have continued constancy and sustainability of effort so that what one group may propose may not, would not be in conflict with another, that it is aligned to the same policy outcomes, which are addressing hate and bias actions, closing equity gaps, and providing input that informs our policies that we already have in place and data sets that we already have in place to ensure that those practices continue. So the alternative to that is to stand up an EEAC independent of the EISH committee and run them in parallel. But again, I think the challenge, potential challenge there is that they, there may be times when there are, there is competition or a misalignment between what one group is advising and another one is not. And for the purpose of sustainability and deepening of our work, I think anything that we can do to get to alignment and to get to consistency, it aids the work and gets us to the place where we want to be. So with that, I'll stop and I'll take any questions or comments you have. And then Chair, I'll turn it back to you for discussion.
Questions?
Whoa, that's loud. It seems that because they're both advisory to the board, that if there were two separate committees running in parallel, it could get very confusing if the two groups came to the board with differing recommendations, because then we're going to be in a position of, well, what was the background here? What was that? You know, we don't want to not do this recommendation, but if it's in direct opposition to this other recommendation, then how do we, as a board, reconcile those? I like the idea of having one committee that can have those deep conversations about reconciling two different ideas that they might have about a solution and then presenting that to the board. I think that makes more sense.
Director Hames?
So I really appreciate wanting to not have too many committees. I appreciate that. And because we do end up, you know, if we end up putting a charge on our folks, right? And not listening to what they say because it is the conflicting proposals, then we risk alienating them. And so I appreciate the fact that we're being thoughtful with that. I'm still a little unsure on how we could meld both of them together because of their different focus, right? And so while it is focused on equity, the EISH committee is in charge of managing the way that we are answering to our SIP, right? And how we have, how we plan on, you know, responding to bias incidents. And I think that this committee is also doing that, but they don't look at the SIP plans currently.
Currently.
So if we could meld those two things together, and maybe this is just out of my own selfishness of wanting to be on the committee.
Completely understood.
You know, without, I don't know how to guide along the committees, right? Without having some of us on there, but you know.
What I would offer to you for consideration are twofold. When you look at the OAR under four subsection, capital A, from that to the end of that section, you will see some suggestions relative to the work of the committee, specifically informing school district board and school district superintendent when a situation arises in a school that negatively impacts underrepresented students. And I immediately thought of our EISH work. So one of the things that we could provide to this committee, if we were to meld the two, is to say, this is a subset of your work. And so even more reason why, when you are populating it with individuals who have already done that work, that that would be potentially their charge. Now, that does not say to the committee, that's all you get to do. In fact, it's very clear in that subsection that I've just referenced that they get to choose other projects that they wish to work on. But that could be a subset, part of their charge is a subset of the work. And then we would need to go back into the AR2 and revise the language that the oversight committee is now a subset of the EEAC. And so that would be one avenue that I would, I would recommend for your consideration.
Another wondering that I have is both of these committees are, you know, after the fact, right? Like, so they're not responding as incidents are happening. They're basically, you know, dissecting what went wrong and then recommending ways of.
Correct.
Us correcting.
Right. And in addition to that, it does not say that I cannot, we, and in fact, it asks that you seat on this committee also staff members. They just can't be the superintendent and they can't be board members. But certainly, I would ask Director Un to be considered as facilitator, to your point, Director Hames, that there's continuity of work and context that can be brought. Certainly, my thought was also Assistant Superintendent McCall as well. That does not preclude us from attending those meetings as the public, because they are considered public meetings. And at this point, I would put a little finer point there that we also want to ensure all committee members' safety as they are doing this work. And so as a public body, they will have the right to decide whether or not they wish to take public comment or whether they wish to receive it in a different way. But they, they will be considered a public body, much like the board.
So like Director Hames, I am a little saddened that this committee doesn't involve board participation, but I understand. And I think, you know, part of my initial recommendation too, when I, when I heard about this new policy, was that these committees somehow combine. And so I think that's a good idea. I do think, you know, just to highlight or further illuminate some of the points that Director Hames was making, we have to make sure that the subcommittee, I think as you were describing it, Dr. Ricky Smith, would attend to the specific elements within the EISH structure. And I think, like, like you said, that SIP committee is important, but also that sort of accounting for and documenting hate speech acts and getting input from students and others on what's happening and what we can do to improve things. And so that would be really important to me, that that be a key part of this committee.
Absolutely. No, agreed, agreed Chair, agreed Director Lynn. And I think that's part of the reason why, while we cannot, we would not be able to facilitate that work, certainly Director Un and others, because they understand the history and have been deeply involved in working directly with the staff that are responsible for implementation of EISH. I think that is a value add to the committee's work.
So just to be clear.
Director Irvin, did you want to weigh in?
Go ahead.
So I just want to clarify what I think I heard you say. The law says that we can ask the committee to do additional work, but we can't require them to do.
Correct. It is an advisory committee. And I think that the thinking here again is that you are providing a platform for them to start. Because typically, when these committees come together, it takes them some time to decide what their agenda is. That may evolve over time. And it may very well be that in a year, we'll be back here having a conversation around how, a better format for that work. Again, what I wanted to ensure was that, A, that EEAC has a very strong and healthy start. And B, that the EISH committee does, you know, continues to deepen its work, which it has in the last year. And the protocols that have, we've had a full year of getting the protocols in place and using that feedback, as you have seen already in this year's reports, and without getting it in conflict with one another. Because when you take a look at this, it's written in a very broad sense, which I appreciate from a policy perspective, but also can be confounding to those who are not used to that kind of language. And so might need more direction. And this would provide them a ready-made entity of work, body of work to engage in and then continue to expand from there.
Perfect. Thank you.
Can I just follow up on that real quick? Does that mean that the committee could decide not to do the work around hate speech?
I think that's, that's a great question. Yes, on the face of it, that's, that is certainly possible, that they may get into it and say, no, this isn't for us. Then in which case, we would then need to bring that back here to the board, because that is a value that we hold and it is not only that, but it's in policy. And so then how do we tease that out? Because the language within the OAR does not allow us to, to put bumpers around the work of the EAC. And so if they choose not to want to do that as, as a body, then we have to make sure that it's not in conflict. And I'm not certain that there's language within the OAR, as it is currently written, that allows us to do that.
So just to continue that stream of thought real quick. So could we then make a recommendation to this group that they incorporate this? But if the group decides not to, then perhaps the only choice we would have is to continue to have an EISH committee?
Correct. That, that would be, that would have, that would have to be the next course. And then navigate whatever comes from that.
But the benefit is if we have the same, fundamentally the same people who are on the EISH committee now, moving to this other one, they're going to presumably want to continue that work because they've seen the value.
That would be the goal. Correct.
So one of the pieces, especially with the EISH portion, which is really like the healing piece, that, and I feel like having Director Un as part of that new process, that was the piece that seems so sort of school and site and incident specific that I would want to make sure wouldn't get lost. But it sounds like there would be the ability to have that kind of cohesive piece.
Yes, I think, again, what I'm teasing out here is the mechanics of how the oversight gets done and who does it. But the, the policy itself in ACV AR1 does not get us off the hook by any, any way, shape, or form. That work still continues. And the majority of that work is site-specific and it is relative to training staff and administrators, which you've already received a report relative to the work that Director Un did this summer, really launching that and solidifying those trainings so that administrators and teachers now have greater, to use Director Un's language, muscle in terms of responding to that. That still falls to the district. That's a district function. What we're talking about is basically the oversight, which is how are the plans written? How effective are the plans? What impact are those plans having relative to, to data? And then what recommendations based on data and the year-long, you know, experience? What kind of impact are those plans having? And what recommendations would the committee have? Of which this last year, there were six which we brought forward and did PD on specifically to that.
And then this is, I'm just curious. So reading over the OAR, there's a lot about what we need to do in the EAC. I'm wondering when and what we get when all of these committees have submitted all of these findings and all of these, you know, documents to ODE. What are we, what are they doing with it? And then when do we see what it is that they'll tease out of that?
Yeah. As to ODE, there is, where there continues to be an opportunity for them to bring clarity to what, what they will do. Typically, when you submit that type, any type of data of that nature to the state, they are looking, should be looking at it through a policy lens, which is are there things in terms of the way in which we write OARs or the way in which we prescribe how districts, what districts should be thinking about relative, in this case, Division 22? Because you've noticed that the, you know, the middle three numbers, 022, that tells us it's Division 22. So, you know, what should we be supporting and directing schools to do to further this work? Okay. That's where they should, that's, that's the lane that they should be in, as well as the state board.
Is that an annual report that they will, assuming?
We assume, but again, are still waiting. There's more guidance to come. Relative to our work, that doesn't change our commitment or our policy, nor does it negate policy ACV by any stretch of the imagination or ACC. And so we will continue to do our work as we did it last year, which is, you know, if, if not this blending, then we'll have to, you know, be thoughtful and careful about making sure that everyone stays within their portfolio so that this work can continue.
Perfect. Thank you.
Couple of thoughts and comments. First, is this board conversation preceding a conversation with the EISH committee itself about this question?
That would be, I think, I would defer to Directors Hames and Lynn relative to either convening as, as we're in process. I'm trying to be mindful of the, the timeline that's, that's in front of us. Now, I did also receive, and this is also for your, your consideration, a letter from Director Gill that basically said, we realize the timeline is short. If you wish to say that you're out of compliance to Division 22 and have a corrective plan submitted to us and then start in '23, there are two things that always concern me. A, I never like to say that my district is out of compliance, so we always work to be in compliance with the law. And B, I continue to be concerned about the urgency of this work. And I think waiting until 2023 is, for me, would not be my recommendation to you.
I will echo that. I think, I want to stay in compliance and I don't think we'll have a problem with that. But I would say, and of course, I'll defer to our committee members who serve on it, but I think it would be a best practice to convene that committee and explain that such, we're going to get rid of the EISH committee eventually and move towards this or wrap them in. I would love them not to just be aware of context, but also be part of, you know, what should we do? What's the best way to make this transition? So that's number one. Number two, and you know, so Section 4 starts with the phrase, "The duties of an educational equity advisory committee shall include", it doesn't say shall be limited to. So if we're constructing our district's AR to implement this, I wonder if we could put in a component about hate speech?
Yes.
Because, so if you go up to the ACV AR2, what I care most about is that final section, the function of the committee, which outlines what's in their annual report. And I just, the, the, the origin story of the EISH committee was students and parents. It started actually before I was the board director. On convene several listening sessions just before you and I had joined the board, where parents, teachers, students voiced hate speech as a top priority that was getting in the way of their ability to access their education. And then during the summer of 2020, this was highlighted again. And so what I, it, there's part of me that is hard. It is hard that we're sort of being forced in some ways to, to move in a different direction. Although I am grateful that we'll have the opportunity to broaden the scope and hopefully include more people. I just think it's really important that, to honor the work that was done before this point, that hate speech and bias incidents are a primary component of the work of the new committee. So I think there's a way to, to put it into our own AR in terms of what we're asking the, the committee to do. But obviously, we'd defer to the experts on whether that's the best practice. Yeah, Owen, did you want to chime in?
No, I just think it's important to make sure that students stay involved throughout the entire process and making sure that the students on the committee know that this is a possibility to let them get into. And kind of, you know, making sure it's clear that this is not going away, that it's just kind of being changed in a different section and kind of like what this means for you and how you can make that impact. And two, I hope with this change, it means that we can help increase awareness of this committee so students that maybe weren't aware this can get involved. I think the more students and the more parents, and the more teachers, for that matter, the more successful we will be.
And we appreciate that feedback. And it is directly called out in the OAR. So absolutely. Much, again, much like what we've done with the EISH committee, this would be mirrored in the EEAC as well. I think the only challenge is that we want the committee to be of a size where it can function efficiently versus, you know, so large that consensus becomes more of a challenge relative to that. But certainly, that's, that's the thinking here, is to cast a broad net and then be thoughtful about the composition. And it may very well be that we think about, since it's not prescribed here, but we think about ways in which people can rotate on and off so that there's even broader, broader participation to that point. But thank you for bringing that forward. And certainly to your point, Chair, I think we absolutely, I do believe that there's room here relative to language. And again, within our own AR2, that allows us to mirror that language. And, you know, if we need to come back in a year and take another look at it, then we certainly have that opportunity to do it. And I would expect that as, to your point, Director Irvin, that, that as we, as this thing rolls out, that the state board is going to be very much interested as to how that's going. And we'll probably come back with potentially some revised rules.
So I'm, as I'm looking through the OAR with a little finer tooth comb, I'm noticing that while at the same time, it says that the committee may consider topics submitted by the school district board and school district superintendent, it also says that the committee will advise the school district board and school district superintendent about the educational equity impacts of policy decisions. So it seems to me that if we have something in policy that we say we're going to do, that has an equity impact, that is automatically the purview of this committee. And there is a degree to which we can require them to address it.
Yep. Thank you. So thinking specifically about ACV and ACC. Yep, thank you. So thinking specifically about A C B and A C C.
So again, those policies. So the speech is specifically covered and the sit is specifically covered if we have it in policy.
That is one additional question I have, and I don't know if we're, if we've gotten here yet, but how specifically would you envision this committee interacting with A C C and being part of the equity audit or involved in that component of the work?
I, I think that that is for, you know, for ongoing work. I think first it is to combine and bring everyone up to speed relative to, to those policies. And certainly I think that's a part of the work that we would need to do once we know what the board's direction is as to how we should, should move forward. And then we can certainly come back with some, some thoughts relative to how that would work.
So I'm hearing, sounds like a consensus that combining committees is probably the best path forward. Yeah, Director Hymes?
So, yes, and, and I think that, I think to your point, it would be good us to convene the committee before we do so, because we wanna give them a, a voice, right? And, but I think that because we are still doing, you know, looking at equity and equitable practices and how our policies are affected by, you know, by our, or how our, how equity is affected by our policies, I think it still is, fits within the, the charge of the each committee. And I think that, well, I mean, I'm speaking for members that are here, but I'm just thinking that that would be something that the members of the each committee would still really want to be a part of.
So Director Hymes and Director Lynn, thinking about the timeline now, it may be too tight a timeline for us to be back to you by the twenty-sixth of September. It may be that we may need to think about the first meeting potentially in October, which I believe Patty is the seventh? Is that correct? Oh, tenth. So the tenth, that would provide one, two, three, potentially four weeks of time for, for, for you and Dr. Lynn to consider a time to pull the each committee together and have that conversation and then provide a slate of candidates for the board's consideration as you do the appointing to that committee and then move from there. And Directors On and Rose, might, does that seem reasonable?
Yes, I think so.
I can see you processing.
There's a lot, I think there's a lot to process here. And along the lines of what Owen had shared, you know, the way I might share this information too is that the platform for which we elevate equity issues have now broadened to the state level. So like when we talk about like the equity gaps and, and the conversations around, what are the, the things that need to be understood, not only in our T T S D community, but now we could say and invite our each committee to, to, you know, see if they would like this is another platform out into the boardroom, right? And I think that is really, it kind of just elevates and amplifies the, the voices that have already been highlighted as part of the work. Something that is coming up for me as well is, as we talked about more guidance from, you know, O D E and this work is, when we talk about convening community, we have to go beyond convening. We have to actually set forward, you know, what does that look to work together? And so oftentimes, it's the process of how do we convene folks, but also create space for people to find out what their charge is and what that's connected to. And when trying to simplify the language in a way that allows more accessibility to those within our communities specifically or underserved, underrepresented community members, it's really important to remember that part of the work here is to be able to center our students' experiences and from the families' experiences of around like what that looks like for families within our community. And so I think as we talk about the history of bias incidences and hate speech, what we know to be true is that it has been multi-generational impact and our students are still feeling it, they're still wanting to. So in that sense, I feel secure in that if we ask our students and we use data, right? Our perception data, our student voice data, there's no way that we won't be able to talk about bias incidences and hate speech. So I'm comforted in that sense because we, we have ample data, if not a continuous data that says that's a prevalent and pervasive problem that we're still wrapping with as a district, but also as a state.
And I would think that, you know, as Superintendent Ricky Smith said, we are at the forefront usually in terms of equitable practices. And I think that this could give a blueprint to other communities around us of how to, if you've already have a committee, I don't know, both of them together or how to start a committee from, you know, from scratch. But, but the way that we have always handled our outreach to community has been, I think, and proven by our attendance to the National School Board Association Conference, that we've been at the forefront of the equitable practices.
You know, go ahead, sorry, Director On.
Looking at the, sorry, the O A R, the scope of this committee is broad. And the responsibility to, for example, advise the school district superintendent about the educational equity impacts of policy decisions. Now, again, you know, as a researcher, I think, okay, we've gotta be doing some studies, right? We've gotta be interviewing people and to end in conducting surveys to try to find out how folks are being impacted by specific policies. That, I mean, is that something you can really do just based on kind of anecdotes? I, I saw, so I think this committee's gonna need a really clear plan. And they've gotta do an annual report, right, which I think connects with what I was saying earlier. They're gonna need a really clear plan for how they're gonna get their work done and they're gonna need a, a great deal of support from district staff and perhaps others to be able to accomplish the goals associated with this. So when I look at this in combination with what the each committee was doing, it's a big task.
Agreed. So although a board member cannot be a member of this committee, my understanding was that a board member can attend this committee's meetings.
Correct, it's public meeting.
And so I think that that might be very useful for this committee as it's reinventing itself so that it has that sort of guide from the side, so that if there's a board member in the room, they can turn to say, is this what the board is looking for, for us to report back on? Or are we getting further, I think that might be a useful thing. And I, it would also provide an opportunity for, for the board members who have been part of the committee to wean themselves off a little more slowly.
Yeah.
So it sounds like there's some consensus in how we move forward. You've outlined a timeline that I think makes sense. Are there any other unresolved components of this conversation that we should weigh in on this evening?
Directors On or Rose, is there anything that I missed, that I've missed this evening? Okay, so just, so I'm clear, I'm hearing that we would bring a slate to you on October tenth. That would give the each committee an opportunity to convene before then and walk through this. And then certainly if there was something that came out of that, that led us to believe of a separation was more important than a, it was more impactful than, than a, a combination, certainly I would apprise the board of that.
I was gonna say, I think it makes sense for Director Hymes and Director Lynn to be the point people for the board in lieu of a meeting, like if their interim conversations that need to happen about path forward because they've been serving on this committee in a leadership role, that's what my recommendation would be. And yeah, does that, are you all comfortable with that?
Say that again, Director.
Basically, if, if there are updates or tweaks or strategy conversations that need to happen between now and the next board meeting, because only two board members can be involved in those conversations, I'm recommending that it's you and Director Hymes because you've served in a leadership role on the each committee.
Okay, thank you.
And then presumably it would be one of those board members or a director on who'd be reporting back to the board about the progress of the committee as it's forming.
It would actually be the Chair of that committee.
Okay.
That would present a, a, a report that be, they are a standalone committee that basically will be driving the process. So I think certainly, Chair, to your point, that I could very easily see a first meeting of the committee as it stands itself up where it is sort of a two-hour, here's the context, here's where we, you know, here's where we've been, this is our journey, this is where we are today, we have two board members here that, you know, as, as much like a work session and provide that information and then step back and allow them to continue their work.
Are there, I'm trying to see in the language here, are there size restrictions on the committee?
No, there are not.
Cause it seems like it would be, assuming the path we've identified is the path that there's consensus to move forward with. To Owen's point, I'm wondering what the sort of all call looks like to invite new people to the table, but without, I don't think we want fifty people on a committee.
Correct.
But yeah, here's your thoughts on that.
So, because of what the makeup of, of membership is, families, caregivers, students, parents, employees and community members and community partners, you know, we have started populating lists of recruiters that we would like to inform a little bit more information on. And also Director Rose had sent out the community survey for interest broadly. But we have, I think even right now, we have about fifty potential recruiters, that includes our, our each committee as well as our, our SO task force, our strategic planning committee, all the folks that have already participated in some of our engagement process. That also would be members of desired membership for the Senate Bill seven thirty-two. So there is that part and also we're working within our building equity coordinators and equity leadership structure to increase participation or engage more students within your No Place For Eight, or Affinity Alliance groups and so forth. So we have, I think going back to what Director Hymes highlighted, we have an infrastructure for outreach that we cultivated over time, which I don't, I don't think we will have a problem getting people to participate, it's determining how many people, but yeah.
Yeah.
One of the things, oh, okay, sorry. One of the things that I normally think about when it comes to recruiting for new members is seeing who doesn't apply for these things, because there are barriers in the way for people to apply and to come from a more equitable source. I think it's important to ask what those barriers are and to see if, for the people who do want to participate but can't, like what's stopping them and trying to help them there? I think that's another important part of outreach, to get maybe new voices in the arena that haven't been there yet.
You know, Shaky, I appreciate you bringing that forward, that's clearly called out in the O A R as well. And so we have to make every effort as a district to make sure that those barriers are minimized or, or eliminated so that all can participate in whatever form. So that includes translation, that includes outreach, that includes support by, with email accounts and, and other pieces. So it elevates the importance in statute of this committee, given the number of supports that are required of the district to provide.
Yeah, Director Hymes?
With the, with it being a committee and being volunteers, are people going to have to follow the volunteer protocol, like signing up and?
I think that's, I think my, my initial answer to that would be yes, with a big fat asterisk next to it. As we, as we work through, given the fact that it very clearly calls out our underserved and underrepresented, which we know that there are some communities where that can become, that protocol can, can become a challenge. We've navigated it before and I, I feel we'll navigate it again.
I'm thinking about, you know, our constituents that also chose to be unvaccinated if they, you know, given the protocol, that too might be a deterrent, so.
Yeah, we'll have, you know, we'll work through those, thank you. We, we will certainly work through those as a, you know, and I, I would defer to Director Moore, who has a very firm grasp on that, as well as Director Rose, relative to both volunteers as well as, you know, the, the concept relative to our ever-present friend COVID. And so we'll, we'll navigate all of that.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, well, I, I did raise, you know, some, maybe I don't wanna call them concerns, but there's certainly things to think about with respect to what this committee will be responsible for doing. I mean, it's, it's, it's a big task and, and maybe if, if the Superintendent and Director On could, could share some thoughts, if they have any, about how they would help the committee accomplish these pretty large goals. I, I feel better about, I guess us thinking about that maybe ahead of time and maybe having a sense of what that's gonna look like.
Thank you, Director Lynn. Director On, some initial thoughts about, about the work of the committee?
Yes, I, I have had the similar thoughts as well. And I think this is where, again, the guidelines are broad. And one of the things, as we were talking about recruitment, is to discuss a little bit more around for the, the body that does, that ends up being a part of the, the committee. I think there needs to be a process of like co-constructing what your agreements are. What are the, what are your, what is the charge of the committee aligned to the policy? Very similar structure of how we've done a lot of our work, right? Which is be very clear around what it means to be an advisory committee. What does, how to read the policy? I think those are the, all the things that need to be calibrated as well. When we, when many of the equity directors came together, we had the same questions that you had around like, you know, which is why in, in partnership, I think of ourselves as, you know, Director Rose thinks broadly, like global. And in, in our department, we talk about tapping shoulders and, and being able to, families that we've connected with, reminding them that you have a voice and inviting in those, that personal and more intimate way is how we get towards the folks that we want really to be part of this committee. It requires a lot of calibrating as, as a community around what it is that they're collectively wanting to address. And there are some very specific things that are highlighted within the bill that, that says the committee needs to address. And so we have to lay all those things out. And most importantly, we have to do it in, with, in community and a relationship before task. Very similar to how we've posted some of those pieces. Now, wondering that I have is around the frequency of meeting and how many meetings that would look like and, and how that would impact, you know, participation. Cause as we heard in the each committee, right, how flexible? Do we have, or like what does the meeting look like? Does, is it hybrid? Who can participate and who can't? Like all those things need to be agreed upon. I know that other districts have done similar work and they, a lot of the beginnings of the meetings were just that, calibrating vision, mission, goal, charge and underfully understanding of what is asked of them. Because the last thing we wanna do is invite folks in as part of the advisory committee and then not having a clear understanding of actually what, what can be achieved with the group. And so I, I think that's one of the reasons why having that conversation with intentionality is very important. And I foresee my role in helping facilitate some of those pieces around. community agreements, um our charge, and then also um, you know, frequency of being all the technical components of it as well as um the broader um outcome, which is a report to the um state. And so when we talk about resources, what type of resources do we have available to connect uh to those pieces? So those are some of the like top of mind things that are are coming up. But I don't know if Dr. Um Sue has other um insights.
No, thank you. I I think that getting to the technical aspects, because certainly um the the committee, just as we saw with Eesh, it took us a good full year to get um our feet underneath us and and understand how to do the work and how to make uh, you know, thinking about, thoughtfully thinking about the recommendations. I would say the same thing is going to be true here. Their first year is basically going to be a lot of of um coordinating and collaborating and um, you know, consensus building relative to the work. And that's why I think what's most important um is making sure that they are anchored in policy ACC relative to educational equity and racial justice, um and certainly policy ACB. Uh, and one of the things that we certainly do between now and October tenth is to crosswalk those documents of what's called out to the OAR that's called out here. Um, that I believe that being able to do that in a in a thoughtful manner uh will be most helpful to informing the committee as to how they wish to start. And then as they get their feet underneath them, certainly I would see that they would grow and become even more independent um as they have a better understanding of the work uh and uh as as it progresses over the years. And that was, again, one of the think, the thoughts we had relative to Eesh. That's a ready-made project that is easy to engage because to Director On's point, um, there are very few gaps that don't involve this inner, this continual generational um misappropriation of language um and and acts that are hurtful to the community. Uh, and that is seeded throughout um all of, I firmly believe through through every equity gap that we have ever present.
Well, one of the nice things about uh the Eesh Committee, and I think uh Director Hymes pointed this out, is that uh the work was tied to work that was already happening, right? So the SIP plans have to be done. Um, and this was just became a component of that. And then our job is kind of look at that and to make recommendations. Um, and but but this seems like it goes above and beyond a lot of those types of things. And so if if the idea was just, we just sort of add it to a Director On's workload, I I don't see that being sustainable necessarily. So is there a plan for um providing additional resources and support to Director On to be able to uh, for example, you know, do these studies and do the research that would be needed to 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 answer some of these questions?
I think that certainly that would be part of our work is to assess what 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 will it take in an initial implementation. Um, and and typically, Director Lynn, when we have one of these, I always think in a three-year um timeline. So what does initial implementation look like? What are the resources that have to come to bear as people are coming up to speed? Then as, when you're about midway through that process and you're headed into year two, then you take a look at what is the load that we are experiencing so that you you have clarity about the problem that you're trying to address um and remedy uh in terms of additional assistance. Where is the committee? Um, and how are they feeling in terms of their ability to function um with, you know, support, but but more independently as you go into year two? And then certainly you do a rinse and repeat relative to year two uh as a check-in about mid-year. And where are you now? And and what supports do we need? And what im, what impact is that having on uh the Department of of uh Diversity Equity and Inclusion and specifically um Director On's work? So that you're constantly keeping a bead on that, but thinking in those three-year chunks. Um, because typically by the end of the three-year period, you should have a fairly solid um foundation and uh working um system uh that uh gets the work done and even allows them to expand and spread their wings just a little bit.
Yeah, I I I think that's a good approach. I would still be an advocate for trying to front load some additional resources to support the work of this committee.
I I think at this point, we're still fresh in it and I appreciate the board's support relative to the additional resources. And, you know, we certainly will be mindful of that as we as we stand this up.
And I think um Dr. Sue mentioned that, you know, it wasn't just going to be Director On leading the charge, right? I mean, we've got uh Director Rose, we've got the Deputy Assistant Superintendent Lisa McCall, right? Where um everybody is going to have their hand in the pot and then we're going to try and recruit as many students as we can, right? So that they can help us out with uh recruiting other of our underserved families. And so I think that, you know, while it seems like a lot of work, I believe and I am super excited that this is happening because it is going to help out our district in um, you know, just um making an uh a charge of how we handle those incidents that are happening, right?
And and to that point, uh, Director, I would say that even if the state hadn't done this, this might have been um an outcome, an outcrop of of the work that we are already doing relative to ACC and ACB. Um, and uh, and I'm, and I share that with you uh as we head into um an unknown election cycle. Um, as a reminder, the governor is the state superintendent of schools. Um, and depending on who fills that seat, um, all of this policy could be changed in a heartbeat depending on uh who the director of ODE is. And and they also appoint the State Board of Education. And so um I would offer to our board that we can, we stay strong and we continue our commitment to this work, uh regardless of what the direction, directive of the state is. Um, we appreciate the uh the current guidance and the current support statewide. But I'm also very mindful um that things can change in a, in in legislative cycle. Um, and so um, you know, there there is that, hopefully, that we won't have to contend with that we will continue to enjoy the state's support for this work.
Yeah, and I don't think anybody has a question of our commitment to equity on this board. So I think uh, I think we'll be okay.
Well, I I I think commitment is one thing. I think, you know, outcomes is another, right? Um, and what I see time and time again is uh e- expressed commitments to something and no resources and no support to make it actually happen. And and I think we, just like districts around the country, are are guilty of that to a degree. Uh, so I, you know, I think that the point that the Superintendent was making about uh not knowing who the next governor is going to be and what kind of politics we're going to be encountering is all the more reason to think about maybe fortifying some support behind this. So I'm just going to be a stickler on that one and, you know, you all can agree to disagree.
Well, I would offer too that I think that sort of underscores the hope of a lot of our current committee members rolling up so that they already really understand the charge. They will work with, you know, the continuity, bringing on kind of new members um to really understand the full scope of the work that that the Eesh Committee did, that now we can kind of roll up into the CAC.
And to your point, Vice Chair, uh, I would also offer that in your strategic planning process, as you are completing that, that is a wonderful place to um call out the resources that the board is willing to commit. In addition, we are, uh, will be beginning probably end of uh middle of October, starting and uh rolling into November, the integrated guidance work with our community, which which consolidates six funding sources, uh all focused to addressing equity, educational equity gaps for our students. And so again, how do we um tweak, revise those plans uh based on community input uh relative to how those dollars are spent so that the, everything is focused in and aligned to uh very intentionally to that work, much like we did with the SSA? So those would be two opportunities that we have in front of us, also very large bodies of work.
Good discussion.
Yep.
Director Hymes.
All right, um, and I guess I I just, might I remind uh Director Lynn that, you know, if it's the charge of the board to put to get, put forward the resources and to put our, um, was that our uh mouth, our money, I don't know, I could, uh, yes, our money where our mouth is, thank you for that. Uh, and so if, if at all, anytime this this district has uh failed to provide the resources, then it's on us. It's not on, you know, our constituents or it's not on uh the Superintendent or the, or how it's been handled, right? It's on us for not providing the resources. But I think to this day, we've been doing a great job of providing those resources, putting our, um, what was that again?
Money.
Money where our mouth is. And um and just making sure that we are creating those uh equitable practices for our students and that opportunity. And, you know, if if things have happened where uh there's been incidents uh that have happened, you know, it might not be within our control, but what is within our control is how we respond to them. And I think that by creating all of these committees, it shows our resolve for those equitable practices.
Any closing thoughts, questions, comments? Appreciate the robust discussion and thank you, Dr. Sue, for guiding us through it.
Thank you.
Um, so next step on this will be the October.
Tenth board meeting is is what I'm hearing is the will of the board. Um, and uh then Director Hymes and uh Director Lynn, um, we will, we are here to support you relative to standing up another Eesh Committee meeting between now and the tenth, um, maybe somewhere in the next week or two so that we have a little, a little longer runway. Uh, and uh then we will have a better understanding whether this proposed um uh union is is feasible or not.
All right, well, with that, I think we will uh adjourn the work session uh at five thirty-eight PM and we will reconvene for a regular session at six thirty PM. All right, thanks.